Good evening and welcome to the September 6, 2011 meeting of the Glendale City Council. Can we have a roll call, please?
Council members Manukian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Friedman.
Here. Tonight's flag salute will be led by Councilmember Najarian.
Please rise, place the flag, place your right hand over your heart, and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, deliverable, and just as for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be delivered by Reverend Skip Glenderman from the Lockinata Congregational Church.
Let us pray. Oh God, we ask that you be with us as we conduct the people's business. Please let us treat each other with respect and grant that what we decide here this evening be for the benefit of all concerned and according to your holy will. Amen.
Thank you. Can we hear your report, please?
The agenda for the September 6, 2011 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, September 1, 2011, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item.
Next item is presentation and appointments at 3 a is Agenda Preview for the meetings of September 13, 2011.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Friedman, members of the City Council. For next week's September 13, there are no items on the Housing Authority or the Redevelopment Agency agendas. There is going to be a joint City Council and Glendale Redevelopment Agency meeting to discuss a proposed ordinance and resolution amending Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code and Downtown Specific Plan relating generally to the transfer of design review authority from the Redevelopment Agency to the City Council, amendments to the agency design guidelines, and miscellaneous provisions to design review processes in both the redevelopment areas and in downtown specific plan area outside of the redevelopment area. There's also going to be a joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Water and Power Commission to discuss water rate restructuring. And during the City Council agenda, under consent, there's two items at 5 a is the Chief of Police and the Fire Chief regarding 2010 United States Department of Homeland Security Los Angeles Long Beach Urban Area Search, I'm sorry, Urban Area Security Initiative Grant Award in the amount of $657,591. And at 5 b is the Chief of Police regarding purchase of equipment required for establishment and operation of the grant fund the DNA laboratory. Under adoption of ordinances, there's one at 7 a is ordinance amending and repealing sections of the Glendale Municipal Code related to massage service providers and establishments. And finally, under action items, there's five. At 8 a is a Director of Human Resources regarding salary supplement and continuation of certain benefits for city employees who are members of the National Guard or Armed Forces Reserves and are called for active duty. At 8 b is a Director of Information Services and General Manager of GWP regarding amendments to the agreement with Agilisys to provide and implement a new city backup system and remote copy at the City of Burbank data center. At 8 c is a Director of Information Services and General Manager of GWP regarding agreement with Utility Integration Solutions Incorporated for professional services to assist with the development of functional and technical requirements, assisting the selection of systems and in the ongoing oversight of several smart grid information technology projects. At 5 d is a General Manager of GWP and Director of Information Services regarding recommendations to enter into an agreement with Shore Power Consulting, LLC, to provide supplemental staffing to implement and support smart grid computer infrastructure and applications, and to amend the existing agreement with Rightmind Enterprises Incorporated to extend the database administrator services to smart grid databases. And finally, at 8 e is a Director of Public Works regarding the Beeline Student Fares and Transportation Fund Service reductions.
Thank you. Next item, please.
At 3 b is a service award presentation to city employee Kelly Anis, 30 years of service.
Thank you. It's always wonderful when we get to acknowledge a dedicated public servant who's worked at the city for many, many years. And we have a really beautiful plaque here, and I'm going to read it. It says, "To Kelly Anis, this certificate is an expression of sincere appreciation for 30 years of loyal and faithful service. May the future bring you a full measure of those endowments which long service and devotion to duty so richly deserve." Thank you very much. Thank you, Officer. If you want to say a few words.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council and city staff. I'm John Gilkerson, the Supervisor of the Community Policing Unit, and I wanted to present Kelly Anis tonight for recognition of his 30 years of dedicated service to the City of Glendale. Kelly was hired on September 8, 1981, and after graduating from the Rio Hondo Police Academy, he went to work in patrol until 1984, when he went up to the Detective Bureau, where he worked juvenile crimes and the general detail. And the general detail is one of those places where a crime that may not fit somewhere ends up being investigated by the general detail. So he got a lot of experience on a lot of different crimes. He returned to patrol in 1989, and then in 1995 came to community policing for his very first tour. He went back to patrol in 1999, and then came back in 2008 for his second tour in community policing, working for me, where he finishes up his 30 years of service. He has been named a Hoover Hero from Hoover High School for his work in curtailing truancy and gang activity at the school. He helped initiate the redevelopment of Adams Square through a series of meetings between the merchants and our community development department. He received the city's prestigious Rosie Award for his customer service on that project. As a patrol officer in La Crosse Senna using problem-solving mindset that Kelly has always had, always, he was doing problem solving 25 years ago when I came on the job, and I didn't even know what it was, and he was already doing it, very analytical. He made 11 recommendations to the school board for the new Daly High School during construction that were all actually adopted. And he received the 2001 Officer of the Year Award from the Lockers Senna Lockinata Chamber of Commerce for his work in breaking up an organized group that was targeting elderly residents for thefts. So he's been very active during his 30 years. And if we can, in the cueing of the video, back in February, ABC News came to the agency and wanted to do a story from the perspective of a street officer. And it came to me, and I said, "I have the perfect person. I have Kelly Anis, a 30-year veteran." And if we can cue that up, we're going to show that for the benefit of all here.
Can't get past that commercial.
That's after we do a quick endorsement for the gas company or something here, whatever.
Even hundreds of law enforcement officers put their lives on the line every night in Southern California, including a veteran who's been patrolling the streets for nearly three decades. Eyewitness News reporter Robert Olgin rode along with him tonight. He joins us live now in Glendale. Robert?
Yeah, that's right. You know, it's a cliche in law enforcement that there's no such thing as a routine call. It doesn't make it any less true, and that's something that's become painfully apparent for local officers here in recent months. Now, we've spent a few hours with a veteran police officer here at the Glendale PD to see how the men and women in blue are coping. It's 7 o'clock, and it's time for a shift change at the Glendale Police Department. Officers are assigned their weapons and hit the streets.
I'm going to just kind of get the license plate off this.
Officer Kelly Anis has been on the force for 29 years, and having handled thousands of calls, he knows that complacency can be his biggest enemy.
One of the ways to stay at top of your game, you just, you run your little movies in your head all the time. What would I do this? What would I do that? What would I do?
The calls come in over the police radio all night. A disturbance here, a traffic stop there.
Where do I make entry? Make sure it's N O C.
And Officer Anis knows that each one carries its own set of risks.
You're it. You are it, and you've got to be mentally prepared for that, and frankly, I think even spiritually, because if it's your time to go, then it's your time to go, but you don't back down from that.
And there is reason for concern, as several local law enforcement officers have come under attack recently. There was the school police officer who was shot in the chest on Wednesday in Woodland Hills. Luckily, his bulletproof vest saved his life. Last week in city terrace, a deputy was shot in the eye by a paroled gang member who was later killed by the deputy's training officer. And in November, a Riverside Police Officer was killed while pursuing the driver of a stolen Big Rig.
Why is this license plate in the window and not on your car?
Back in Glendale, Anis says officers know exactly what they've signed up for, and he says in the end, it's all about training and vigilance.
You take an oath that you are going to perform this function, and especially when it counts.
Officer Anis tells me that it's important that departments learn from these recent shootings, and that if any mistakes were made, it's important those mistakes are not repeated, because again, we've learned that even the most mundane calls can turn violent. Reporting live from Glendale, Robert Olgin, ABC 7 Eyewitness News.
Robert, thank you.
I'm glad all those shootings were not in Glendale.
Yes, yes.
And they mentioned that it wasn't.
Exactly. But I think I picked a pretty good ambassador to represent the police department on that night with ABC. On a personal note, Kelly has two sons and five grandchildren. He is a church musician at the Hillside Community Church of the Nazarene, where he's been a member for 35 years. He does free computer repair for the elderly. He is a Mac computer addict, and he's one of those people who's always happy to stick his iPhone in your face and show you the latest apps and...
Advocate.
Advocate, that's what they do. He'll be splitting his retirement years between Southern California and his boyhood hometown in Northern Michigan. I'm not sure if he's going to spend summers there or winters there, but be that as it may. Kelly came on the job a little bit later in life than most of us, and he had some retail experience, and I think the idea of customer service has stuck with him, and that's why he's been such a valuable community advocate and community policer in the city. He's always been doing long-term problem solving. He has always looked at the root cause of an issue. Instead of just arresting and arresting, he wants to know why it is taking place at that location and what he can do about it. In his contacts with everyone in the community, he's always understood that it's not Kelly Anis's reputation per se, but the police department's and the city's reputation at stake. The chief wants missionaries, not mercenaries, to represent this city. He wants those of us to go out from the police department and show that we are in partnership with the city and not an occupying force. When Kelly leaves this week, we lose a real missionary. He's remained enthusiastic, creative, and trustworthy throughout his entire career, even as he comes to work for me every day. And true to his nature, Kelly is very precise, so he came on September 8 of '81. He will leave this Thursday, September 8 of 2011, and not a day later. He will be sorely missed in my office and through the whole agency, but we do wish him well.
Thank you. Kelly, would you like to say a few words?
I, yes. Thank you all, first of all, for the opportunity the city has given me to have this job, for the employment. The supervisors over the years have provided me an opportunity to use my best skills. There have been times they've needed to kind of guide me a little bit, because I have a lot of energy and I can go in a lot of different directions. But they gave me the freedom to really excel, and I think that says a lot about management, no matter what department in the city. And I've been fortunate that I've been able to work with managers and even department heads in different divisions of the city, and through working together have developed friendships, which has gelled and really moving in leaps and bounds in problem solving. It's been mutually beneficial for not just reducing calls for service from the police department, but enhancing the quality of life for the employees of another division, but then also ultimately creating a higher quality of life for the residents that live here, visit here, or work here. I really enjoyed working. I'm going to enjoy my retirement, but I just, I have so many friends here, and I really want to thank everyone.
You are going to be...
Did I break my back?
You are going to be sorely missed here in Glendale. Thank you so much for your years of service.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Mr. Weaver?
Yeah, I just want to say one thing about Kelly. Occasionally, I consider him a cop's cop. He's very unique. Occasionally, we had coffee over the years. Illustrate his dedication. Three of us were sitting having breakfast one time in a little restaurant, and we got our meals, and we no more than had our meals. He got a call. He didn't say goodbye. He didn't take his food with him. He just rose up out the door, and the two of us sitting there, "What the heck's going on?" He got a call, and he knew what he had to do, so he just left us sitting there with his food and went back into the kitchen. That's the kind of guy you are, Kelly. We're going to miss you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Weaver. Even on my way, our way over here, there was a gang fight, 30 involved, bats and knives and all that stuff. Officers had, a carload of guys stopped at gunpoint. I've done that work. It's part of the nature, but that work continues, and it'll continue. I don't know, I guess for 28 years, I thought I might be able to solve everybody's problem. And it finally began to dawn on me that's not realistic, so. But I do want to thank my family.
Yeah, introduce them.
My family, okay? There's too many to name, but I will say that they, I have brothers and sisters. I have two sons. I have my grandchildren here. They have flown from Colorado, Seattle, San Francisco, and driven from the San Fernando Valley.
Have them all stand up.
In Glendale.
Please stand up.
All the relatives.
We had the police reception earlier, and they were there, and they got to hear a slightly different presentation, but it was very good, and I'm grateful for the family. And I can tell you, their prayers, their active love and concern, they're proud, so I'm glad I was able to honor that.
Drop around occasionally, okay?
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Next item, please.
Next item is City Council and Staff Comments.
Are there any City Council comments? Mr. Najarian?
This morning, I attended the 10th Annual Southern California Transportation Summit, called Mobility 21. Aside from the great speakers that they had, they had an exposition booth, and in that exhibition hall, I came across the, a vendor who can implement the idea that we all on council have discussed and supported before. That's the pay-as-you-go rent-a-bike. It's called, this particular vendor is called Bike Nation. They have them throughout the world, through, where did you see them? In Madrid?
In Seville and in Madrid, both.
As well as other cities on the East Coast and in Northern California. Depending on the volume of usage, the city may have no fees involved. Obviously, if there's a lot of usage, they'll make enough fees to cover their maintenance costs. If usage is a little bit lighter, the city may have to subsidize or pay a little bit to keep the vendor there. We were obviously talking about the train station and maybe a location downtown, so I'm going to pass this on to you, Mr. Zern, and it's, you know, one more, I'll pass it on to the mayor first, and it's something I think we should pursue. Thank you.
Two other comments? Mr. Garcia?
I'll go after Mr. Quintero.
Well, very timely comment by Mr. Najarian, and I'm going to quickly, it's way too thick to discuss at length, but SCAG, the Southern California Association of Governments, passed its 2012 Regional Transportation Plan, Sustainable Community Strategy and Also Regional Housing Needs Assessment. This is something that took a long, long time to put together. It's very important in terms of not only for planning purposes, but also for federal and state grants. It approved the Low Sand Corridor, something that Mr. Najarian is very familiar with, and that's the idea of consolidating a 351-mile system from San Diego to San Luis Obispo. It also included OLDA in its RTP in its strategic plan, OLDA being the Orange Line Development Authority. So if any of you policy wonks are interested, you should go to the SCAG website and read all about the Regional Transportation Plan. It is truly important, and SCAG, to remind everyone, is an association of governments that stretch Ventura, Los Angeles, Orange County, San Bernardino, Riverside, and Imperial Counties. So it's a huge planning organization.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia?
Madam Mayor, we're requesting that item 8d related to the auction of city-owned property on Altera Avenue be pulled. There were no bids for that property, so that item will be, have to be brought back for subsequent agenda discussion.
Okay, so if anyone's here for that item, just to be noticed that it's not going to be heard tonight. And just one last comment from me, which is along the same lines of public transportation and transportation, which is that Sunday, September 25, at 8:30 in the morning, is the Mayor's Bike Ride, first annual, I hope, Mayor's Bike Ride. And the idea behind this ride is to promote public health and traffic safety in Glendale. I hope we get a really great turnout. It's going to be a lot of fun. It's approximately a 12-mile ride. I rode the route last weekend, and it's, for the most part, flat. It's an easy route with lots of stops, and we're going to be stopping at civic sites along the way. We're going to have a chance to ride over the new Flyover Bridge by Disney. We're going to see the Fire Museum, just lots of other really fun places that you may not have seen in Glendale. So I hope everyone comes out, and if you need more information, there's some up on the, on the TV screen right now, or you can contact Zazet Mullins and Management Services for further information. I hope you see my colleagues there. I hope you see the public there.
Are you going to block off the streets so that...
The streets will not be blocked off. This is going to be in the streets, so we'll have, we will, of course, follow all traffic rules, the way that cyclists always should. It's Sunday morning, so the traffic really shouldn't be too bad. I rode it on a Saturday evening at 4 o'clock, and it really was not, it really wasn't bad at all, even on a Saturday. But we're making sure that all of our difficult turns are at lights. It should not be difficult. So if you've never ridden in the streets, if you've been afraid to ride in the streets in Glendale, this is a good way to start, to get your feet wet, because it is more comforting to ride with a group than to ride by yourself. And there will be advanced cyclists there to help you along the way. It's going to be a very reasonable, I'd say even slow route. It's family-friendly. Everyone has to bring a helmet. You have to ride with a helmet and sign a waiver, but it's really, you know, to have fun and to promote health. I hope to see you all there, and I hope that future mayors will continue this. I hope it becomes a new tradition in Glendale of mayor bike rides.
Where do we meet again?
You meet, thank you, Mr. Manukian. We meet here at Partridge Plaza, right behind City Hall.
Have to wear a helmet?
You must wear a helmet, sorry.
Can Mr. Quintero bring his motorized bike, or does it have to have pedals?
He could, but he would be... I just don't know about the helmet.
He would be very frustrated to be riding at our pace with, on his motorcycle. Okay, thanks. Next item, please.
Next item is consent to following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. A member of council or the audience requests some separate consideration, may do so by making such motion or request before motions are proposed.
Move the consent comment.
Second.
Hey, roll call.
Council members Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Friedman.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is oral communication. This portion is reserved for three-minute community announcements, and at the end of the meeting, we'll have the full five-minute oral communications.
Thank you. I have three cards. First card is Glendale Commission on the Status of Women. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Friedman, City Council, staff, those women and men that are watching tonight. Paula Devine, Chair of the Commission on the Status of Women. In this economic climate that we are in, the Commission on the Status of Women felt it was time to bring back our Money Matters program. So in partnership with Senator Carol Lou, we are presenting a four-part series, which we are calling Money Matters for Women. I am here with my fellow Commissioner Linda Burns and our staff administrator Christine Baboumian, and she's going to briefly explain the four programs.
Good evening, Mayor Friedman, Councilmember staff. My name is Christine Baboumian. I'm the staff person for the Commission on the Status of Women, and as Chair Devine mentioned, the Glendale Commission on the Status of Women is partnering with State Senator Carol Lou's office to provide this series of workshops. There is a three-series of workshops that will take place every Thursday starting September 15 in the Police Community Room. That'll happen from 6:30 to 8 p.m., and they are free and open to the public. The first topic that will occur on September 15 is cash and risk management. The September 22 event is tax and investment planning, and on September 29, we will be covering estate planning. And all of these are led by professionals in their fields, so the women who are, will be presenting will know what they're speaking about. We will also have licensed certified public accountants that will be in attendance at all the meetings who can help answer questions at the end of the workshops. As mentioned, the workshops are free of charge, and anyone who wants to come can come. They don't have to be taken in sequence, but they do get progressively more complex. We can RSVP by contacting Senator Lou's office at 409-0400, or me at 548-4844. And in addition to this three-pronged series, the Commission and the Senator's office is also working on a one-day workshop that's tailored specifically for women from low-income families who might be homeless or in transitional housing. This is taking place this Saturday at Junior Achievement of Southern California. The Commission is sponsoring the cost for the women to attend this workshop. And it's just a basic money management workshop that will cover classroom-style instruction as well as hands-on interaction. There will be professionals from the finance industry there as volunteers, and the Commission and the Senator's office is working with our local nonprofits like Path Salvation Army and Door of Hope to refer women to this program. So this is through a referral program, but anyone who is interested in learning more about this Saturday's workshop can call me again at 818-548-4844. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to add to the City Council and the viewers that none of the money that is going towards this workshop is city money. It is money that the Commission on the Status of Women has earned through our fundraisers, and that is how we are paying for the scholarships, I'm calling them that, for all of the women that come to the workshop at Path, at Junior Achievement on Saturday. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. My next card is Tony Passarella, followed by Leon Mayer.
Evening, Mayor Friedman, Councilmembers, the staff, and community. My name is Tony Passarella. I've been a basketball instructor for the City of Glendale, community service in Parks Department for seven years, and I want to talk about my fall program. But first, I want to announce that the Leisure Guide is no longer being mailed to homes in the community. The hard copies are no longer, and they're now online. I want to point out that Norma Vias, the Community Services Coordinator, worked tirelessly, tirelessly to do this for us, for the community, and it's now totally online. It's all color, and it's really nice. The website address is www.parks.ci.glendale.us. And her staff is amazing over there, and if you don't know who Norma is, she's one amazing young lady. She takes her job very, very seriously and works very hard for the community. I would like to highlight a couple of the, several of the new classes. There's a martial arts class, and this is going to be at Maple Park, which has been newly refurbished. Also, MMA kickboxing is also going to be at Maple Park. There's going to be beginning painting, musical dance theater, Dumba fitness, and all of this starts next week, September, Monday, what is it, September 13, I think. Chinese calligraphy is going to be offered, drawing and painting as well. And what's on the screen now is my particular classes. I teach five to eight-year-olds, that's starting next Thursday at 4 o'clock. And in that, I also teach life principles, health, nutrition, also we talk about teamwork and sportsmanship and that kind of stuff. And there I am with the little kids there. There's a phone number to call, 818-548-2184. You can register online or call that number for more information. Next slide. And there's my older class. Those are nine to 12-year-olds, and we, I teach the funnel man's a basketball, dribbling, shooting, and passing, and it's a lot of fun. Thank you.
Thank you. Leon Mayer's my last card.
Good evening, Mayor Friedman, members of the council and staff. My name is Leon Mayer. I'm here on behalf of the Friends of the Glendale Public Library and the Public Library as well. And I noticed that so far, no one said anything or repeated anything about the observance that's going to take place at the various fire departments this coming Sunday in honor of the memorial for 9/11 that's going on in Washington, DC. And we're honored to have on September 15 at the library Professor Dan Caldwell from Pepperdine University, who has been personally invited to attend the memorial service in Washington, DC, and because of his previous contact with the administration, not this administration, but with the administration... administration, but with the administration, and his activities in the field of foreign affairs, especially the Mideast. Now, his book, Vortex of Conflict, the U.S. involvement with Iraq, Pakistan, and Afghanistan, will cover pre-1939 relations with Iran and the onset of Al Qaeda, the First Gulf War, the Iraq War, the present involvement with Afghanistan and Pakistan. And he is eminently qualified to talk about these events because he has an A, B, M.A., and Ph.D. degree from Stanford University, from the Fletcher School of Diplomacy and Law at Tufts University. He has served at the Naval Postgraduate School at Monterey, California, Brown University, and as a naval officer in U.S. Navy. He also served in the executive office of the President of the United States. So he has a great background, and I think we should feel honored that he's coming to Glendale so soon after 9/11 to talk about things pre and post 9/11. And that's basically his background, his involvement. He's in the Council of Foreign Relations for the federal organization, and he will be there on September 15th, 7:00, talk about his book. And his book is a one-volume, the only one volume done encompassing all these years, pre and post 9/11 affairs. Please come, and I'd like to personally invite alumni from Pepperdine University. Professor Caldwell asked me to do that, so everybody's welcome, including alumni from Pepperdine University. Parking is validated. Please park at the structure on Maryland adjoining the library. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next item, please.
Next item on the agenda at 7A, adoption of ordinances. This ordinance establishing compensation for members of Glendale Redevelopment Agency, introduced on August 30th, 2011 by Councilmember Weaver. At A1 is a resolution providing for supplementary benefits and compensation of certain officers of City of Glendale to supplement the classification and compensation resolution of said city and amending the Glendale Municipal Code relating to compensation and fringe benefits.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to move 7A.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Menuchyan?
Yes.
Njerian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes. Next item.
I'd like to move 7A1.
And just for the record, that resolution is not amending the GMC, but everything else related to that resolution is correct.
I'm sorry, what was that again?
The resolution is not amending the GMC. That's just an error, but it is establishing the benefits and compensation for council members, and that's related to the item with respect to the benefits.
And the motion is correct.
There was a motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Menuchyan?
Yes.
Njerian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes.
7B is an ordinance authorizing and approving a lease of real property at Mount Tom to the state of California. This was also introduced on August 30th, 2011 by Councilmember Weaver.
I'll move 7B.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Menuchyan?
Yes.
Njerian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, we went through that kind of quickly, and I just want to... I would request that perhaps you or perhaps our city attorney could explain to the public the impact of what we just did in 7A and 7A1, because we zipped through it, and I don't want it to seem as though this is just some routine item with little bearing on the city. In fact, it has quite a bit of bearing on those sitting before you who act as a redevelopment agency.
Do you like me to explain the matter?
Yes, in a very sympathetic tone of voice, you know, with feeling and sensitivity to the loss that... the financial loss that those of us on the dais will now feel because of this.
Okay, I'll do my best. The item... This ordinance that was just adopted by the council was introduced last week. It relates to the compensation that is paid to the council members for serving on the redevelopment agency. Since 2002, the agency was paid a set salary based on the ability of the city to receive compensation in excess of the $30 per meeting cap sent by redevelopment law, by virtue of the fact that our population was certified by the Department of Finance as being in excess of 200,000. When the U.S. Department of Census and later the Department of Finance both certified our most recent population numbers as being less than 200,000, our office conducted a review of whether that required a reduction in the agency member's salary and concluded that it did. The council introduced the ordinance last week and adopted it just right now, reducing the salary from, which was $1,400 per month, to $30 per meeting at a maximum of $4 a month... four meetings a month, excuse me. In addition, so that's obviously the impact to the council members for serving on the agency. The second item of the resolution was permitting the... requiring the city to pay 100% of the medical contribution, medical premium for council members. Currently, the compensation... or the... excuse me, the premium was... the full premium less 250 to 350. So that's... those are the two items that were subject to the approvals just given.
Just to be clear, the redevelopment... payments to the redevelopment agency members has been wrapped in with sort of the overall compensation for city council members. So previously, city council members were receiving something like $38,000 a year in total compensation. After this ordinance, it equates to about a 40% pay cut, so the council members will now be receiving 40% less, which I believe comes to $23,000. I don't have the number in front of me, but it's a very substantial pay cut for those up here on the dais. So I think the reason probably Mr. Njerian wanted to make that clear was that there was a, what I would call, somewhat misleading headline in the Glendale news press that said something along the lines of councils looking at a raise. Well, to me, if you're taking a 40% pay cut and you're maybe trying to find a way to make it only a 38% pay cut, I would not call that a raise. I don't think anybody would, in their right mind, would call that a raise. The bottom line is that the council will be receiving approximately a 40% pay cut from here on out, at least until the foreseeable future.
And we will not be working any less harder. We will not be meeting any less often. We will not be transferring any of our duties. The work stays the same, but a severe cut in our compensation. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, you're welcome. Next item.
Moving on to item 8 under Action Items. At 8A is Director of Community Services and Parks regarding potential construction of soccer fields as part of the Adult Recreation Center Phase II Park Improvement Project. At A1 is a motion providing direction to staff.
Thank you. Mr. Duran.
Yes, Mayor Friedman. Members of the city council, in the fall of 2010, the city completed construction of the new Adult Recreation Center facility at its existing location in Central Park. The new ARC consists of a 19,100-square-foot facility. Phase II of the new ARC construction project consists of a park improvement project on a 1.5-acre park adjacent to the new building. The planned park improvements include landscaping, walkways, lighting, retaining walls, mo curbs, park furniture, and ADA pathways. These improvements in a large open turf area will allow for various recreational and programming activities and public events and serve the persons using the ARC facility. Therefore, on July 5th, 2011, the city council did approve a motion authorizing a change order to Hopkins Construction to proceed with the ARC Phase II Park Improvement Project. However, on July 12th, 2011, the city council requested staff to explore the possibilities of implanting into the design soccer fields at the open park area as part of the ARC Phase II Park Improvement Project. Since then, the park improvement project has been on hold, and staff prepared a report to the Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission to obtain their feedback regarding the feasibility and potential of installing soccer fields as part of the ARC Phase II Park Improvement Project. While the commission recognized that there is a high demand for soccer fields and that any opportunity to add soccer fields needs to be considered, the consensus from the commission was that the ARC Phase II project site is not the proper venue for soccer fields at this time, primarily due to the lack of space that would be required for anything that comes close to a regulation-sized soccer field, elimination of passive use by seniors, children, library patrons, and the general pedestrian public using Brand Boulevard, the resulting elimination of any opportunity for programming such as outdoor concerts, and the increase in noise and parking demand, and the impact on strategic planning to connect the park to other developments planned for the area, including the library rehabilitation project, the Mona museum relocation, and the passageway project. These are all projects that are currently in design or starting construction in the same area that are associated with or connected to the park, the open park. At this time, I would like to introduce Hagup Kasabian, the project manager for the ARC, and he can walk you through the proposed park improvements and schematic overlays and the options for the soccer fields that were looked at, and more detailed information on the impact of the soccer fields and the feedback received from the commission. So Hagup.
Good evening, Mayor Friedman, council members, city staff, and community, and everybody that's listening and watching us tonight. As Mr. Duran went through a background of what has transpired since 2009 at the Adult Recreation Site, what we have up on the screen right now is the option that was approved on July 5th, 2011. Just to give you a quick sort of orientation of where we are, looking up here, which is north, that would be the library where I'm pointing. The Adult Recreation Center is this L-shaped building, which is currently existing. This is Louise Street and Colorado Street going down this way. The proposed area that we're talking about today is the 1.5-acre green space right at this location. The proposed plan that we have up is basically a combination of ADA pathways that makes the site accessible 100% from any entry point, and we would have wheelchair accessibility coming up this way, up the ramp, and all the way around the building and the site itself. Other features that we have are seating areas, picnic areas. We have the Tai Chi area that was existing, and we have saved... we do have some minor landscaping. We have saved existing trees, three oak trees, and some of these other trees, and an open lawn area that would be used for various events, public events, weddings, rentable events, programmable activities between the library, the parks, and different departments. And currently, the site is also designated to be the safe dispersal area during an emergency. This entire site is currently on an hour-and-a-half emergency lighting system, so if there is a power outage in the city or around the site, we have work to make this site as an emergency dispersal area, so the whole site would be fully lit for an hour-and-a-half during an emergency. Let me move on to the first option that we have of soccer fields. What we have here is an 82-foot by 150-foot, which is approximately half of the smallest regulation-sized soccer field. And when I mention regulation, that's per the National High School Association regulations. And this soccer field can obviously be... can be implanted either going in the north-south direction or east-west direction, which would fit in the east-west direction as well, but as you can see, it would take up most of this open green space area. The second option is a 60-foot by 120-foot. Possibly, this could be used for a seven-on-seven soccer competition. Here we have 165 by 300 feet, which is pretty much the smallest regulation soccer field that we can fit on the site. The site itself, just to give you a little bit of background, the entire site here is about 3.3 acres. I'm having a little trouble with the mouse. It's not allowing me to... This entire site, from the alleyway to Louise, down to Colorado, to the library here, is about 3.3 acres. So we've got approximately 360 feet going in this direction and about 280 feet going in the north-south direction. The next option that we have is a soccer field of 200 by 300 feet. As you can see, the larger we get with the soccer field dimensions, the more it's occupying of the site. And finally, we have the soccer field, which is the official size regulation, 220 feet by 340 feet. It pretty much occupies the entire site.
Wait, that's overlaid over the buildings, right?
That's over... It's taken up part of the building, and I apologize, the mouse, I think I'm away...
Don't show me the next size field up, because I get it. I get that it's too big.
Yeah, all I wanted to do was just to show you all the options that we have with the soccer fields, and this is what we are coming up with. Now, as mentioned, this was reviewed by our Parks Commission. We have also... we like to point out some of the concerns that we have with the soccer field in addition to the size of the soccer field. Although we can't fit a soccer field, coming back to the first option...
That soccer field, then, is what percentage of a regulation size, approximately? Like, it looks like it's about 25%?
This one is 50% of the smallest regulation-sized soccer field.
50%?
Half of the size.
Of the smallest size?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct. Some of the safety concerns that we think would be an issue if we do put a soccer field, one of them, the ball's being kicked out onto the street, having kids running after the ball. Obviously, we would have to put a fence around the soccer field to maintain the majority of those balls and/or the balls being kicked towards the senior center. That's one of the safety concerns that we do have. In addition to the impact it would have on the strategic plan between the Parks Department, the library, and also the passageway project, the Mona project. The Mona and the passageway projects would be happening right at this location. Brand is right where the mouse is pointing. The passageway is coming straight through in this direction, and also it's taken up the alleyway and the parking lot. So that would definitely hinder some of the programmable ideas that we have. It would also limit the use of this open green line... green space into a single-use area, which would be the soccer field, where we could keep it pretty much open for a variety of uses. I think between Jess and myself, we have covered pretty much everything that has to do with the soccer field. And again, we are here today to... we wanted to present to you with what we have. We also want to get your direction on how to continue on with this. We do have approved plans. We have received our permits. The contractor is ready to proceed with the second phase of the project, but currently we have put this on hold because we did want to explore this and make sure we do have everything studied correctly and presented to you, and as soon as we get your direction, then we can proceed on one way or the other.
Thank you. I do have several cards before I go to the public. Are there any questions?
Question. What are the hours of operation of the Adult Recreation Center?
Currently, the Recreation Center opens for business at 8:00, and they close at 4:00 Monday through Friday. On Saturday...
Hands.
They're open on weekends as well, but if...
It's the same.
Same on Saturday, 8 to 4 on Saturday, and Sundays?
Nine.
Nine to 1 on Sundays.
Thank you.
Mr. Weaver?
Where would be the parking for this?
Thank you for bringing that up, and actually, that's something I did forget to mention as far as something that we would have concerns with. Parking impact would increase with the soccer fields. Currently, the parking that we have for the Adult Recreation Center is along Louise parking alley right back to the east of the site... sorry, to the west of the site, and also the parking structure up on Maryland. So that's all the parking that we have, in addition to parking lot 11, I believe, which is across the street on Colorado.
So there's no provision? So there's no, there's no provision for additional parking for this?
Currently, no.
Okay. Secondly, your report says $850,000. For what size? For the smallest?
We are taking that, yes, as the smallest size, somewhere around the 82 by 150.
Okay, and is that in the budget this year that we adopted?
No.
How can we do something if we don't have $850,000 to do it? I guess that's our decision, whether we're going to take it out of the reserves.
And those numbers were based off of other soccer fields that we have built in the city, and basically, we have estimated what it would take for a park of that size to put an artificial soccer field in there.
Other questions before I go to the public? Okay, my first card is Mike Mohill, to be followed by Pat Reynolds Christensen.
Mayor Friedman and council members, thank you very much. My name is Mike Mohill. I want to talk about sharing space, sharing space with the Adult Recreation Center. I remember when the library was never there at the corner, there it is today. It was gonna, it was across the street over there by Harvard and Kenworth, and the city at the time could have, but the library stands place else, but they chose Central Library because the city owned the land at the time. That's where in the spot we're in today. I understand right now that the Glendale Chamber Commerce Building is up for sale. Why don't we buy that land and make it a parking structure for the library, the Adult Recreation Center, and for the soccer players, future kids and their families? Yes, there's not enough space, 1.5 acres, but you know, a practice field doesn't need to be 1.5 acres, it can be a half an acre, a quarter of an acre. Kids, all they want is a post-it stamp to play with. These kids are under the age of 13, they're not adults, they're not 17, they're not 21. It'll increase the noise, absolutely, and I'm glad to hear that, because you know, where there's no noise, that means there's no kids. If no, no kids, I think it's, you can't hear me?
I guess you get an extra three minutes.
I did that. Okay. Okay, let's get back to the noise level. I love to hear noise from kids, that's, that's why I live in Glendale, not at a senior citizen retirement home. When there's no noise, put me, bury me at Forest Lawn, please. You're concerned about the use of the land? The soccer goals can be portable. There could be a couple of them. Kids don't care, just give me a piece of green space. Don't make it formal. The area can still be used for concerts and storytelling, anything you want. Just be creative, just like kids are. Because the kids don't have a space, they make a space. Some kids play soccer on concrete, on asphalt. And if the soccer ball gets kicked out of playing ground, well, let's not put the soccer field next to Colorado Boulevard, first of all. And if we put the soccer ball near the senior center, hey, those, those seniors would love to catch that ball and help the kids play soccer, trust me on that one. Portable goals, next to the library. It's a wonderful idea to share space with children, folks, isn't it? You know, we talked about having a soccer field over there on San Fernando Road, and Target wants $20 million, and the city said they don't have any money for that. We're here, we have the money, we have the space, we should buy the land next to, across from the library, Glendale Chamber Commerce. We need space, we buy space, we buy it all the time, and the money, $865,000, that's nothing, that's a, that's a straw hat, that's a... The main thing is, do we want the kids to have a playing area? That's the bottom line. If you don't want the kids to not to have a playing area, go tell their parents and their grandparents that Glendale City Council doesn't think South Glendale deserves a playing field for their children, that they have to go up to the sports complex in North Glendale, where there are no buses up there for their children. This is a wonderful idea, who doesn't love children? I don't have any kids, but I'm the best uncle there is in town, just ask me. For the last 22 seconds, close your eyes and imagine hundreds of children playing ball every day of the week, and enjoy the seniors at the recreational center coming out, organizing those teams. I don't want to see any city officials, they'll just mess things up. Thank you very much for your time and consideration, my name is Mike Mohill.
Thank you. Pat Reynolds Christensen, followed by Stephen Rockfogle.
Good evening. I'm Pat Reynolds Christensen. I was with originally the Recreation Parks Leisure Services, Community Services, our title kept changing, in Pasadena for many years. I've also taught those subjects at Pierce, PCC, and Cal State University, Northridge, as well as to get my own degrees there in it, after I had practiced it as a volunteer for many years with youth groups, as I grew up with the programs myself. I'm certainly interested in children and what they do. I'm now in the senior classification, but I still have a broad look at recreation and what it should be. One of my concerns when I heard about this was the size of that facility and the formal soccer field that would take up so much of the room, particularly, as was mentioned, with the fence. I know that the center is anxious to have kids on the park and mingling with the seniors and doing different activities, but in a less planned or formalized structure. There's a lot of room there to do that, and I think the seniors would enjoy that, too. I'm going to be, we're having a program there for seniors, and I think you all are aware that most of the research done on senior health is the fact that they need exercise, and they need their minds stretched into new directions, and to keep their minds working on new subjects. So we're going to have a program that's lifelong, known as Lifelong Learning for Seniors, and everyone's invited to come. It's been run by the college for quite a few years, but with, for 11 years, as a matter of fact, but with the change in funding and all. It has been a volunteer organization, and so we're going to feel very good about that wonderful center of yours, which I find has received awards, and it should, it's one of the best I've ever seen. My concern has been the safety of the seniors there, because there's three or four problems that we have. One is not moving fast enough to get out of the way of those running soccer kids, and I've got two of my youngest grandchildren, two girls who've now become tigers at soccer, and I do stay far away from them when they're playing. But the other is the hearing. One of the problems with the loss of hearing for seniors is not hearing a problem when it comes near them. You know, when they hear the kids running up and things like that, it just doesn't happen. So falls and that sort of thing cause many problems. The third is eyesight, and you will see there at the center, many people who are using canes and other implements for walking and that kind of thing. But there's still places to integrate programs and everything, and I think they'll be anxious to do that, and I certainly will, to work with them, too, to make more programs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Steve Rockfogle, followed by Christian Moreno.
Thank you very much. My name is Steve Rockfogle, and I happen to be president of the Parks Commission, but I am here today speaking as an individual, and just wanted to make a quick point that seemed, last week or two weeks ago, when this was talked about, it was made to sound that the Parks and Rec Commission do not want to have soccer fields for the children in Glendale, and that was inferred about you today. We want to have soccer fields for the children in Glendale as much or more than anybody in town, but this is not the right place for it. Staff has done a great job to tell you some of the problems and some of the things that we saw, this is just not the right location. But I wanted to be here tonight to clarify the fact that the Commission is committed to not only more soccer fields, but more facilities of all kinds for the citizens, the adults, the children, the seniors in Glendale. This is just not the right place for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. My last card is Christian Moreno.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, my name's Christian Moreno. I'm a resident of Glendale. I grew up in South Glendale, and I remember growing up not having a place to play soccer. We played on the street, played on my front yard, with just the smallest area to play soccer, and we used our imagination, trees, trash cans as goals, and, you know, I love the idea of a soccer field right there, because there's nothing around, there's nothing close to our area where we can go out and play soccer. And I have a daughter, and I want to see her grow up and do sports, I want to keep her out of trouble, and I want the same for the rest of the children in Glendale. And it doesn't matter the size, the size or, you know, if it's official or not, it's just, the idea of having a soccer field where children can play is just, just a great idea. You know, where children should get out, get together and play, and be out of trouble. And, you know, I know, I know, like, at Palmer Park, the basketball courts aren't official-sized basketball courts, but, you know, we, we played on them, I played on them my whole life, kept me out of trouble, and I think, you know, just, just soccer fields is just a great idea. I know there's fences that could be put up to keep the balls from rolling onto the street or going into the Adult Recreation Center. I just, I just think that if there's a will, there's a way, and it'd just be a shame to not have a soccer field here. And thank you, thank you, city council members and Mayor.
Thank you, thanks for coming. That's my last card, I'm going to go to the, to the council. Mr. Quintero?
Okay, well, this is not an appropriate location for a soccer field, regardless of the size. I met, it's been a few weeks now, but I met with the president of the school district and just sort of brainstorming, and there's one location that we both talked about, and it's something I've talked about for many years, and that's Roosevelt Middle School. Roosevelt Middle School is a very appropriate location, it's a good size, it has the, the lighting, and hopefully, we'll be able to move in that direction real soon. Then, of course, we have Pacific Park nearby, and we'll be making the decision whether to do an artificial turf there, as could be done at Roosevelt Middle School. But this location is appropriate for what we thought about to begin with, and that's the idea that we'll use it for public meeting areas, music festivals, concerts, active and passive recreation, and specifically, that means if a father and son or daughter show up, or a bunch of kids show up, I'm sure they can take their soccer ball and play some pickup soccer there in the, in the green lawn of this central park. So I just don't see any way that I would be interested in making this a soccer field-only space. I mean, it's basically going to make it unavailable for other uses, and it's just too limited, so I'm, I'm against it.
Senator Ian?
First, I'd like to pick on Steve Rockfogle. I can do that, because he's my appointee to the Commission. Steve, you're wrong, you're absolutely wrong. There wasn't an inference made that we don't care about children. There was a direct statement made by the speaker, that we don't care about children, we don't care about their health, their activities, and I think that goes too far. I've known Mr. Mohill to be a reasonable man most of the time, but, but to say that we don't care about children's activities and children's athletic pursuits and programs goes a little bit too far, and it doesn't help our discussion about trying to find the best place to put a soccer field, and this is what we're talking about. I think it, I think it merely goes to highlight the, the lack of fields that we have, where we see a small, subpar location at our Adult Recreation Center, you know, a splotch of grass, and we want to start designing soccer fields, and I don't blame anyone for that, but I think we need to just think about that a little bit more and realize that a, a fully programmed soccer field, which is what's being proposed, just is not the right use for that. The grass gets torn up. A few years ago, I was coaching with Mr. Manukin, a YSO team, and, well, he was, I know what you're wondering, he was the head coach, I was the assistant coach. I took my orders from him those days. We started out with a, and space was very tight, we were playing in the left outfield of one of the Shoal Canyon baseball parks, and the grass, when we started, was very nicely trimmed, green, beautiful, smooth, but after about the third or fourth week of trying soccer, it just was torn apart, and it was frayed, and it was turning into a splotch of dirt. I think we need to locate our fields in proper areas. Mr. Quintero has pointed out Roosevelt Middle School, which is currently a turf field, but I understand that there's efforts to make that a artificial turf field. Also, we had the idea of putting a field at the Columbus School Site, now we're reassessing the location of that, and perhaps the Pacific Edison Park may be an ultimate site for placement of a turf field. And you see what, if you look at that site, you see what happens to your typical grass soccer field, it's just a splash of dirt that, you know, that you see in those Third World, Third World Country videos where the kids are playing with a soccer ball made up of, you know, masking tape sort of bundled together. So I think we can look forward to our, directing our efforts towards that type of field where there is plenty of parking, there's plenty of facilities, plenty of room, full-size field where kids can both practice and play their games. And, of course, that being said, there's nothing that would prevent children, or even adults, from playing a, a less formal activity of soccer at those, at the site next to the Adult Recreation Center. And even then, I know we get complaints from, from neighbors saying, oh, they're playing soccer. We used to get it at Glorieta Park, there was a small group that would come up and bring those portable fields, and neighbors around were quite displeased that there was this weekly activity. In any event, we're certainly not preventing some young kids from getting a soccer ball and running around and kicking, and if you like noise, they can scream and yell, and certainly, the seniors are welcome to, to participate in enjoying either visually the games, or retrieving the balls, or the frisbees, or whatever the kids are playing with. But I think we're best served by focusing our efforts at finding the very best, our efforts and our funds, in finding the very best soccer field that would get the best bang for our dollar. Thank you.
Moreno can?
I want to thank the Parks Commission for their input. I respect your opinion, I disagree with it, I also disagree with my colleagues when it comes to soccer fields and places where, where kids can go and practice. In my number of years, not very many, a few years of coaching with AYSO, the greatest number, the greatest need is for children that are under 10. It's not, as the kids grow older, they go and start playing with clubs, they play with their schools, unless with organized soccer such as AYSO. The season actually just started now, September, they started practicing in August, and I can, I haven't, I'm not coaching this year, so I don't have a conflict with AYSO. However, I can just imagine every year what problems that they face in terms of scheduling fields for the younger kids, not for the older kids, for the younger kids, U6, U8, U10, under, under 6, under 10, under 8, and those are, those are the kids that really need to be introduced to the game and learn the rules and regulations, and how to play, how to play as a team, and how to play, and value sportsmanship as opposed to scoring goals. In my, in my opinion, as the young speaker said, it doesn't have to be a regulation-sized soccer field, and I, as I... And I, as I looked through the internet, there's different sizes of soccer fields that, that we can build. Parking is not an issue because there's parking on the left side. And as I asked the hours of operation of the adult recreation center, the center closes in the afternoons at 4:00 and most of the kids are usually at school until about 2, 3:00 and by the time they get out to practice, it's 5, 6, sometimes later. For younger kids, of course, not too much later. So I don't see any kind of interruption with the senior services except maybe for Saturdays. However, the, the suggestion also in terms of the goal, as Mr. Mohill said, there's, there's goals that, that are moved around. There, we have some at the, at the sports complex that are moved. And some of, some of the actually older kids play at the sports complex with short-sided games with those movable goals. I know some of the schools have tournaments there and they use the half the fields as opposed to the full field. The 82, Exhibit Number 2, which is the 82 by 150, or the Exhibit Number 3, I think would work out well. There's a lot of things on these drawings or exhibits that I'm not familiar with. I would like to see redesigned, actually. I just think, I understand the issue of, this is not the right place. And I agree that there are better places in terms of soccer fields, but we have to understand that the amount of green space and soccer field we have in South, in South Glendale is very limited. And we have to utilize every last small piece of land to provide for activities for our youth. And I strongly believe in that. I think this is one of those sites where it could be used as a soccer field, if not a regulation soccer field, maybe a practice field where some of, where AYSO and some of the other teams can schedule their practices, at least during the week, if not playing the games on the weekends. Parking, I think, from what I see, there's plenty of parking. On a Monday afternoon after 4:00, I don't think there's going to be a lot of parking on, on the brand side of, of the park. Even on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, maybe Fridays, Fridays, there could be some parking there. But I don't see the parking as a problem. And I just think that this is an opportunity that we should not lose. I think we should take this opportunity to come up with some sort of a design that would work over there. In terms of funding, $850,000 seems a little high for, because we're, we're gonna, we're gonna put sod and grass on the field already. So painting a field and putting goals on the field, I just don't think it's going to cost us $850,000. I understand the grading issues and all of that that could be worked into, into the contract. Maybe there's a little bit more involved than painting lines and putting movable goals on it, but I just don't see it costing $850,000. And if it does, I would suggest that there's a million dollars sitting in the fund that would, that would pay for tenant improvements for the Mona Project, which is on hold, and we don't know if it's going to go forward. We can utilize the funds from there to transfer to this area. This is a redevelopment area as well. Transfer to this area and use $150,000 for renovation of the Mona Building instead of a million dollars. I'd rather spend $850,000 on the youth than spend it on a, on Mona, Museum of Neon, Neon Arts, which I personally don't think has anything, any connection to the city of Glendale. But I wasn't here when that agreement was done, so that's, that's, that's the way it goes. But I think, going back to my initial theme of utilizing any available, any available space for youth and their activities, I think we have to, we cannot, we cannot disregard the opportunities and look into this area in a way out of the box, in a way where we can have some sort of scheduling, some sort of organized sports in this area. And, you know, the seniors would enjoy it, in my opinion. I think they would have a great time. They, they already watch soccer on TV, I think, and sometimes they have to pay for it. You know, this is for free. They can go on the weekends and watch it and they can watch the kids play soccer during the week after 4:00 if they want to hang out and watch the kids practice. There is nothing better than that, than to pass the time and maybe they can go and help with refereeing. So I'm all in favor of it. Maybe not the exact designs that you presented today, but I'm sure there's a way of doing it. If the council willed it and the staff put their minds to it, I know that they can do it. So, and all of that said, with all due respect to the Parks Commission and my colleagues. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver?
Well, I'm sure I speak for all of us on the council that we do care about the kids. It's the physical limitations of what we can do with the space in this town. The southern part of Glendale is the, probably the densest urban population center in the United States of America. House Council has allowed that to happen by building one apartment building after another right on top of each other. And we're left with that to deal with. Both of my kids played four sports in high school and played at the collegiate level as president of the Boosters Club. I, I know what the kids need and I think every kid should play sports if they're capable. There's always a sport they can play. But I do not think this is the place to do it. We built an adult recreation center at great cost. It's next to a public library where it's supposed to be silenced. I used to study in the old one, but they built the new one here, so we're stuck with it here. We, in late June, we finished up a budget and adopted it, cutting over $18 million out of the city budget. And that was not easy and we all talked about how tough it was. Programs that needed $20,000, $30,000 went, by the way, by Powell and Star and some of the others, tried to get them back in. To sit here less than two months later after adopting, well, number one, on July the 5th, we told Hopkins Construction, go ahead and finish this. Now, two months later, spend anywhere between maybe $200,000, $800,000. We didn't just adopt a budget, it turned around and all of a sudden find money. If there was money there, we would have utilized it. We would have debated where it could best be used and would have done it. We didn't. To think we'll now turn around and spend that kind of money to do this, I think it's wrong. In an area especially, this should be of a passive nature, more related to what's going to happen in a central park area with adult recreation. Anything you put in there, look out the windows, it's 7:20 and it's dark. We're getting darker. Another month, it'll be dark at 5:00. So you're going to have to put lights on the whole thing and light it all up. This isn't exactly, at least what I envisioned in it. Maybe the seniors would like it, but I think most of them would be watching the NFL football like I do, the most popular sport in the United States of America today, and college too. Just go ask anybody in the marketing arena. NFL football is number one in this country. It's king.
What's that about a football field?
Well, soccer is a little bigger than a football field, but not by much. Thing I've argued on the 15 years I've been here, I'm still looking for additional cooperation with the school district. As Mr. Quintero says, every school from elementary up have fields. Now, they're not all in grass, they're not all on synthetic turf. They have asphalt, but that can be changed. But some of those schools got to tear down their fences, assumed a little liability and create space. That's why we have our greatest open space is on the school fields. For us to try to find them, stick a little piece into a corner, I can't see it. To me, this is a passive park area and that's where it should remain. It's just a shame. I can, I live in North Glendale, yeah, I can drive by Verdugo Park and find it sitting virtually empty. I can go up to Glen Oaks above my house, Shoal Canyon Golf Complex, sitting empty. But the kids are down in South Glendale and the problem always been, how do you get them to the fields? That would require busing, all organized day, it would take money. So to try to get the kids to the empty fields is another problem for another day. Trying to shove it in here, or shoe it in, doesn't make any sense to me. Although to leave it as a passive park and tell Mr. Hopkins to go ahead and finish up his work. Thank you.
Mr. Duran?
I would move that with respect to the potential construction of soccer fields as part of the Adult Recreation Center Phase 2 Park Improvement Project, council hereby direct staff to...
Proceed with Hopkins?
To continue with the passive park design.
Phase 2.
Continue with the existing project.
Continue with the existing.
Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call?
No.
Councilmembers Manukin?
No.
Najarian?
Yes. Does that vote count twice?
No. Unfortunately, it does not for you. Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes. Next item, please.
8B is Director of Community Services and Parks regarding potential renaming of Central Park to Veterans Memorial Park. B1 is motion direction to staff.
Mr. Duran?
Mayor Friedman, members of the City Council, I'd like to call up Teresa Alexanya, administrative analyst in our administration section, to provide you with this report.
Thank you, Jess. Good evening, Mayor Friedman, members of the council, staff and the public viewing at home. My name is Teresa Alexanya, administrative analyst for the Community Services and Parks Department. On July 19th, council, at the council meeting, City Council requested to agendize the potential renaming of Central Park to Veterans Memorial Park. In response to that, the department presented a report to the Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission on August 15th for feedback on the potential renaming. The following information was presented to Commission and we'd like to present the same information to City Council with direction on how to proceed. Sorry.
It's okay, we heard you.
The current area, which encompasses the library, adult recreation center and the open grass area, which was just discussed, makes up what is currently referred to as Central Park. A little bit of history on how the area came about and, and the name for Central Park, the library staff was kind enough to do a little bit of research for us and provided that from 1908 to 1937, the area was utilized by the Glendale Union High School and what is known as Glendale Community College currently. In 1938, the city purchased the property and constructed a park with tennis courts and a softball field occupying half of the property, flowers, shrubs, grass and tree occupying the other half. The first available reference to Central Park was found in a Los Angeles Times article in November of 1945, referencing parades down Brand Boulevard with, leading to a post-parade activity in the Central Park area. Other articles in the LA Times suggest that Central Park was often used as the terminus point for parades that travel through Glendale's business centers. Some, some of the parades were the days of, some examples were the days of the Verdugo's Parade. In 1949, the first adult recreation center was, was opened and in the early 1970s, Central Library was constructed. The current projects that are in that vicinity or in that area are the Adult Recreation Center Phase 2 project, which is the, the park area, the park site, which currently has improvements that are very minimalistic and would allow for easier incorporation of changes as part of a combined Central Library project and Central Passageway and the Mona Project. The Central Library improvements include reorientation of the library entrance to Harvard and another entrance facing the adult recreation and the park. The next project is the Central Park Passageway project, which includes a creation of a pedestrian walkway and the Mona Project, which is the Museum of Neon Art. The, the ideas that we presented to Commission to bear in mind and for, in considering the possibility of potentially renaming the, the park where, whether it fits with the existing projects, which were the ones just mentioned, whether it would be duplicating efforts, because we do have a, a war memorial at City Hall, Broadway and Isabel, and we also have the Vietnam War Memorial in Montrose, whether it would lead to adding a display or a monument at the park if it was renamed, which is currently not budgeted. But if we do choose to, of course, the design is very minimalistic and can incorporate anything. And also for other potential uses, the Sister City Committee has looked at the park area and the ARC Plaza area as potentially putting a display or showcase honoring the sister cities with the city of Glendale, and we currently have seven sister cities. We also would like the City Council to, to know that we do have a park naming policy, which was established in 1988, the department does. And it states that the, the following guidelines will be used in evaluating park names with the recommendation from the Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission. And it includes, the guidelines are a name which has recognized geographic, topographic, historical or botanical significance, name which honors an individual who has made a significant contribution to the city, state or nation. So if council chose to rename that, it would fit under that category. A name, named after an individual or family to have donated property for development of a park. And the selection process may include where deemed appropriate a contest or competition if it is a, felt that such an alternative would promote greater community-wide interest and participation. The feedback received from the commissioners, the Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission, where two of the commissioners felt that renaming would be premature and maybe should be considered later on when the projects in the area are a little further along and have been further discussed. There was also concern that the library was named Central Library after its location and is true of most libraries where they're named after their location. Also that it would be duplication of efforts and they questioned whether having multiple displays and monuments would, in different locations throughout the city, would dilute the city's efforts of honoring veterans. One commissioner felt that it was a good idea and that he would support, support the name change. And another commissioner would support naming it Memorial Park, which was a more encompassing name and would fit better with the types of uses for the site, like the potential sister city display. And maybe at some cost later on, if there, there is the budget available, moving the monuments from the City Hall location to the park. I've basically presented to you what was presented.
Who suggested moving the war memorial?
Sorry?
Who suggested moving the war memorial anywhere?
Which commissioner?
No, I mean, how did that come about?
No, no, it was just, meaning if there are too many memorials or if there would be another memorial to add, maybe that would be one of the options instead of, instead of designing a new memorial.
Just for the record.
Why don't we let her finish her presentation, then we can ask questions.
So this is, this is all the information we had presented to Commission and wanted you to know the same information and we have brought to you feedback from the Commission. So staff is, staff would like feedback from City Council on how to proceed, whether we would like to rename it, the, the Central Park to Veterans Memorial Park or keep it the same or something new. So we're up for any questions.
Big questions. Mr. Quintero?
I have a question, yeah, Mr. Duran. Who actually asked that this come up on the agenda? I mean...
I didn't, I didn't. I brought this up.
Somebody seconded it.
Seconded it.
It was Councilman Manukin.
I suggested Memorial Park and you said Veterans Memorial Park. I said, okay.
Well, I was wondering because it went in front of the Parks Recreation Commission. So I see, so it, it went there first.
So it was there first and then it came here.
That is correct. Mayor Friedman, Councilman Manukin, if I may, if I may, during the discussion with the Commission, one commissioner felt... one commissioner felt he would be able to support renaming the park to Memorial Park, and if we did that, he was further suggesting that we might want to consider moving the war monument from City Hall to the park. Oh, wait a minute, let me just cut you off, because we keep saying this.
I know.
It's not a war monument, it's a memorial to the people who died. I stand corrected. Yeah, that's number one. And then number two, it took a lot of energy, actual physical labor.
A lot of money.
Build that memorial, money and the labor that veterans donate to others. So that idea for me is a non-starter.
Same here.
Don't mean to cut you off, Mr. Duran.
No, I think it's important to cut this, that discussion off from the beginning. That's not, that was never an intent, and that should have never been discussed or come up.
So the three veterans agree?
Yeah.
I disagree that it's not Jermaine, because I think if you're going to have a Veterans Memorial Park in one place and you've got your monuments in another place, that's where I think that the commissioners felt that that was an issue in terms of diluting the importance of either the monument or the park. So it's natural then to say, well, if you're going to have the park in one place but your monument somewhere else, where then do you have your Veterans Day events? Where do you do all that? And that's why the suggestion to move the monument came up. So I think you have to have that discussion along with the discussion of the park. But why don't we finish with questions, go to the public, and then make comments? Do you have any other questions?
No, I just brought this up, it came from the, from the community, I just brought it up for discussion, I didn't think it would go that far.
Would you like to...
I'd like to hear from the public.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the public, too.
Well, that's normally the process, so thank you, Mr. Duran. I have two cards, Chang Li, followed by Efren Olivares.
And there's a, and let me just see if I can frame, it hasn't been raised yet, but maybe it was when I was getting some water, but part of the suggestion is that, and it's kind of separate over the naming of the park, that we dedicate part of that park to some sort of sister city recognition. And so I think that's, let me just frame your comments, Mr. Li.
It will interfere with all the soccer players.
Okay, Mr. Li.
Madam Mayor, council members and the staff, good evening. My name is Chang Li, I'm with the Korea Glendale Sister City Association, and I'm one of the four sister city associations in Glendale. As I've said, I've mentioned that there are seven sister cities. It would be nice, whether it's a name memorial or it remains as a central park, to recognize and, you know, honor some of these sister cities. Sister cities will have an, I guess, collaborative effort or opportunity to participate in maybe designing this passive park, in bringing some of the ornaments or some of the monuments that represent. I think that would complement this Tai Chi area that we have in the park. And also, we, the sister association members got together at the ARC Center and looked at the plaza area where we wanted to dedicate that area also for sister cities, and we were all in agreement as far as trying to do that. So I just want this, you know, body to examine this and possibly evaluate naming of the park to include sister city recognition. Thank you.
Thank you. Efren Olivares is my last card.
Good evening, Mayor Friedman, council members. I'm Efren Olivares, president of Mexico Glendale Sister Cities Committee. And first of all, I want to say that over the years, I think we might be the oldest sister cities committee in the city, and we truly appreciate the support you've given us, sister cities. I just came back from Rosarito this morning. Things are not as bad as we'd like to hear over here. You need to go surfing, Mr. Manukian, but anyway, whatever you name the park, if there is an opportunity for a sister city area, nothing major, nothing large, we Chang and we all, the Armenian sister cities, we all met, we know there's a place there. It doesn't have to be anything major, it needs to be just some acknowledgement of our sister cities, and we're, you know, we're willing to participate in the design process. As a side note, I was the one who designed the Veterans Memorial when Mr. Zarian was on the council years ago, and veterans are a challenge to work with, but we got through, and what you see in the corner...
Can say that again, Efren.
I'm sorry?
Can say that, these veterans are a challenge to work with.
So, no, I needed to say that because if it does end up that you guys decide, the council decides to go there, I'm sure it'll be a nice project. But certainly in the sister cities, we appreciate your work and we appreciate the help, and we look forward to, if there is an opportunity, we'd like to be there. So we thank you for that. Any questions, we're here. Thank you.
Thank you. That's my last card.
Is there another card? What, I'm just curious, both of you spoke about sister city, doing something for sister cities, what, what kind of thing do you envision in terms of, yeah, both of you? In terms, maybe a plaque or size?
I'm not sure what, what the Korea sister cities may think, or Armenian sister cities may think, or Japan. I can tell you that in Tlalquepake, they actually took a public space where a lot of the tourists go to, and they have a couple of monuments that displays a small artifact from all the different sister cities, including Glendale. I'm not saying that's what it should be here, but something along those lines.
Well, that gives me a good idea of what it could entail.
Some of the things that was brought up in our discussion with our sister cities, we have two sister cities, Khosong is one, and Kimpo is the other. Some of the members here have been to Khosong, and only, I think, two of you went to Kimpo. But Khosong is land of dinosaur, and we have fossil footprints, and those are some of the things that they wanted to bring it over here, you know, to signify or, you know, to tell the story of Khosong. And Kimpo City also is a very, you know, it's a similar sized city, but, you know, they have a vision of creating a Sinopolis, which is a cinema city, which really coincides with a lot of entertainment industry that's in Glendale, so they wanted to go in that direction as well. So I think we have an opportunity to have in the park, you know, to tell the story of our sister cities. I think, you know, we have an opportunity to share all the cultures in the city of Glendale.
Very good, thank you very much.
I have a question. I'd like staff to brief me sometime this week. It seems like the sister cities have been meeting. I never knew that they were meeting, so I'd like to know what's going on. I used to do the sister cities, and I tried to form an umbrella group to bring all the sister cities together. Apparently, they had been meeting on this, so could I get a briefing this week of what's going on?
Absolutely. We'll have Zazet Mullins, who runs our sister city program, put a brief memo together describing the meetings that have occurred, and they've only been less than a handful of meetings in the last year and a half or so, or two years. So we'll get that for you. Mr. Quintero?
Oh, go ahead, you have something to say, Mr.? Yes, Mayor Friedman, council members, Ms. Beers, if I may, there are some very preliminary discussions taking place with the sister cities. That project is being led by City Manager's Office, but thus far, it's very preliminary. There is interest by, as you can see, there is interest to try to incorporate a display either at the ARC Plaza or right adjacent to that as part of the park improvements. We mentioned earlier, and I think Hagab has mentioned, that the improvements are very, very minimal, meaning that we can add elements to the park at a later date when, when a project like this is more thought through and better planned and more meetings take place. But as Ms. Beers indicated, City Manager's Office could give you an update of what those efforts are.
I just strongly urge that you have the council involved in setting policy if we want to do something with all the sister cities combined. I'm here tonight for the first time, and I don't appreciate it.
And Mayor Friedman, members of the city council, no decision regarding a monument or a showcase of the sister cities would have occurred without council input. They were in the processes of really looking at sites to see feasibility before bringing some options to you, and as part of this agenda report that is before you this evening, they thought it would be a nice time to also let you know that they have looked at the site and are interested. But to mention again, we would make no decision before bringing it to council for your direction.
But you initiated something.
Let me go to Mr. Quintero.
I just want to finish my statement. Staff initiated something without consulting council. You started out, meeting with sister cities, looking at sites, you never came to the council and says, do you want us to do this? Now, as a council member, I was trying to do it, and it dropped through the cracks, never happened. But I think we should decide, do we want an umbrella organization? Are they going to meet informally?
Her fault, Mr. Weaver, it's her fault.
Oh, it's never Zazet's fault.
Defend yourself.
No, she's just trying to...
But look, you know, I mean, I understand your concern, Mr. Weaver, but at the same time, somebody has to come forward at some point and make a proposal like they did, and staff has to, I think, get it to a level where it's even ready to bring to us.
Staff has done about this.
I don't think that we need to be involved in everything always from the beginning of any thought that any group may have.
Maybe not, Madam Mayor, but in this case, I do want to know, because I was intimately involved in sister cities for eight, 10 years.
Okay, it's okay. Mr. Quintero?
Did you have a comment to me?
Are you sure you want to make comments?
I wouldn't say anything, Zazet, I'd shut down.
Yeah, I think that...
I'll take the fifth.
I think we, I think that the staff understands Mr. Weaver's point, so let's go back to the question hand.
Well, I just want to say that this is a typical example, when you throw enough ideas up on the wall, little did we know, Mr. Manukian and I, and I did second it, the motion to just discuss, just discuss naming the park Veterans Memorial, that all of this would happen. Let me start by saying, I think it's a great idea that, that we have some sister city participation, some types of displays there. I think this, the setting for this Central Park, to me, is a passive sort of artistic relaxation type of park, and I think it'd be quite interesting to, to have that type of display. Now, getting on to the other issues, the idea of moving the Veterans Memorial, I mean, financially, it's going to cost quite a bit of money, and I just like the idea that this was put together, Veterans Committee was formed, and Mr. Olivares was the architect, and there were a lot of different opinions on what to do, and we worked through all the designs, it happened, and it's been a focal point since then. So I really don't have any interest in moving it to another location. Then in terms of naming the park, Veterans Memorial Park, I guess, at best, I'm somewhat neutral, I'm not sure what, you know, sort of good it would serve, or what, what would kind of come of it, but whatever the majority wants, I'll, I'll be happy to follow. Personally, I mean, I think Central Park works at this point, and maybe like one of the commissioners pointed out, maybe in the future, we could think about coming up with another name for it.
Madam Mayor?
You're in Najarian?
So just a couple of comments. First off, let me address Mr. Weaver's concerns about who drives the policy, and I fully support his, his proposition that the policy should be driven from the council. However, I do understand, and I agree with your point, Madam Mayor, that there's a certain level of preparation that must be done to permit us to make proper policy decisions and have a proper policy discussion. And somewhere, I think there's a fine line as to, you know, how far, how far along developing policy considerations for us, does that, or does that not cross a line to driving the policy? But I fully understand his point. I think, I understand this, at least with regard to the sister city groups, that this is merely the very first proposition that they're putting before us, and that we're certainly in the position to kill the idea or to permit it to advance. We don't have any specifics, but I do think in the terms of the general concept of having a sister city recognition, I think it's a, it's a great idea. Part of what makes Glendale such a great city are our diverse cultures, and we've, we've exhibited that and expressed that through reaching out and obtaining sister city relationships with many different cities and many different countries, and it would be certainly a benefit to us to have some sort of display and recognition. I don't want to call them monuments at this point, I don't want to call them anything, but some type of recognition. You know, the footprints of the dinosaur are certainly great, and that may or may not be a decision that we make at some point. Of course, there's issues of size and placement and all these other, you know, broad variety of issues that I'm hoping staff will help us get through in the appropriate steps, but the general concept of displaying some recognition to our sister cities, I, I fully support. In terms of the name, I'm not, I'm not, I don't see an urgency in changing the name to a Veterans Memorial Park. I think it will cause some confusion. La Cañada has their Memorial Park, or maybe it's Veterans Memorial. We do have a memorial in Montrose, it's not a park per se, we do have a memorial area here, which, again, is not a, it's a little bit, could potentially be called a park area. I just don't see a need to move it at this point. Clearly, no slight to our veterans who served in the armed services. If that was the intent, perhaps there are other ways to express our gratitude to them and maybe also, I don't want to say, I was about to say, put something in the park there, but that would certainly then start to dilute from the recognition we give them here at the corner and up in Montrose. So I think it would be best if we focus any gratitude and dedication to our veterans at the existing location in Montrose and here right outside City Hall.
Manukian?
Well, thank you. The issue of the Veterans Memorial should have never come into the discussion, it was never requested, so it should have never been even discussed. My first choice for a name for this park is called, is Missed Opportunity Park. However, I don't think that I will have any, I don't think I will have any support for that. My second issue is, will any of the displays include a soccer goal from the sister cities? No?
Tricky, tricky, yes. You should have been an attorney, Mr. Manukian.
I'm trying, I'm trying to follow in your footsteps. But, but I think there is a Central Park. When you say Central Park, think, people think of New York, they don't think of Glendale. And I think the, it should, Memorial Park, I'd be in favor of, Veterans Memorial Park, no. Memorial Park would, is general enough where you can include the sister cities in it, and any other organization or connection to Glendale could certainly have a display there. So I don't see any objection on my part, I don't see any problems with Memorial Park. But of course, the council will make that decision.
Mr. Weaver?
In my lifetime here, it's been Central Park, and that's what I wanted to stay. We have Central Park Library, and we have Central Park, and I'll stay that way. And if my colleagues remember, just a few minutes ago, we approved that Phase Two continuing to be completed there. I think we ought to allow it to be completed. We can visit the site in a later day and see what we want to do in addition to it, to address sister cities, whatever. But remember, we also talked one day to underground parking in the entire site, and everything that we're going to put in currently is going to come back out with a park rebuild on top of it. That's what we talked about. Whether that'll happen, another council could veto that. But you never have enough parking, regardless of where it is. The sister cities, yes, I hope we get together, all the sister cities, and create an umbrella organization. I'll be glad to pull out my packet that was approved by the city attorney's office some years ago for creating an umbra organization, and let them go do it. Then they can speak as one voice, not segregated, with one sister city dominating over another. It's got to be all working together. So that's it for me, Central Park.
Okay, I'll just make a few comments. I don't, like Mr. Najarian, I don't feel the compelling need to change the name of the park right now. I think that the discussion about moving the memorial is very important, because if you don't move the memorials that we have, then what exactly are we saying when we call this park Memorial Park? Just making the name, to me, doesn't really mean anything. It doesn't give an identity to that park that says anything about veterans, war, memorials, or anything else if you don't have the monuments there. I love the idea of having sister city something there, next to the library, where not only do you have a library that, of course, is full of information about... do you have a library that, of course, is full of information about the entire world, but then you have displays of cultural artifacts from our sister cities and talking about their cultures and cultures that are also predominant in Glendale. To me, that's the kind of passive display that would be really meaningful to people who are visiting the park and visiting the library. Having that in a park called Memorial Park or Veterans Memorial Park, to me, is a disconnect. And I do think it distracts from our other memorials that are here at City Hall and in Montrose. I think that we have these memorials. They're a wonderful tribute to our veterans, and I think we should concentrate on those and continue to do the events that we do there. I just don't see the pressing need to rename this particular park Memorial Park when you're not planning anything that has anything to do with memorials there or veterans there. So I would prefer, at this point, to keep it Central Park, and at some point in the future, we could always revisit that, but I'd like to see how the park develops and what people think of it as, if people think of it as a Central Park, or if people start thinking of it as something else. I think that we should get the park going and in use before we have this discussion, because I think that the use of the park should be what dictates the name and not the other way around. As Mr. Weaver said, it's been Central Park for a long time. The identity that people have for it right now is Central Park and is its association with the Central Library. That name makes the most sense to me. Who knows? In five years, we may want to call it Sister City Park, depending on what ends up there. So I would not be comfortable supporting the name change at this point. That's my inclination. But I would love to see the sister city ideas brought further forward, and I hope that staff continues to work with our sister city associations. And if Mr. Weaver feels that there should be an overarching, sort of coordinating sister city foundation, maybe that's something that you can all discuss with staff as well.
And no one, sister city, can dominate.
So I'm not hearing a whole lot of real consensus here or a whole lot of desire to change the name, although there's, you know, some sympathy for it and maybe some not sympathy. But would somebody, are you looking for a motion or a direction?
You don't need to make a motion. You can do a motion, a known file, the report if you want, or staff's got direction on this.
Does staff feel they have enough direction at this point? Maybe you should repeat back what you've heard, because there's been a few different voices here, and I want to be sure that we come to some kind of...
Keep it a Central Park at this point.
I think it's pretty clear to keep it a Central Park and continue...
The issue was naming the park only. There was nothing else in mind.
Okay.
But...
We'll continue to work with the sister cities committee.
Yeah, work with the sister cities.
I'll just say that I do think that, you know, this is a good discussion to have, and it shows the kind of opportunities...
Wait, wait, wait. No, I think Mr. Weaver had a great idea.
So nobody considered naming it Manukian Park?
Wait a minute. No, that wasn't agendized. We need somebody to...
I moved to agendize.
Oh, no, no, no.
Well, let me just say, though, that I do think that this has been an interesting discussion, and it shows, whether it's soccer fields or memorials or sister city displays, how many hopes there are for this park and how many different visions there are for this space. So, you know, we'll start seeing that take form, and I think that over the years, my guess is that this park will continue to grow and continue to transform as the community continues to have these kinds of ideas. Okay. Thank you. Have your direction. Next item, please.
At HC, as General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding amended memorandum of understanding for Imperial Valley geothermal feasibility and exploration by and among the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, Imperial Irrigation District, Glendale, Burbank, Colton, Pasadena, and the Southern California Public Power Authority, SECPA. At C1 is a resolution authorizing execution of an amended MOU.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, Steve Lynn, Assistant General Manager of Supply for Glendale Water and Power. Tonight, I'm here to talk to you about the Imperial Valley Geothermal Project. This is part of our ongoing effort to meet our state mandated renewable energy targets. LADWP owns about 3,000 acres of land in Imperial Valley or close to the Salton Sea, and IID owns a little over 2,000. This is a well-known geothermal resource. It's also about 50 miles from our existing Ormat geothermal plant. Today, we're here to ask you to approve Phase One of some development work on this project. Phase One includes all the work needed to drill four 6.75-inch holes, 3,000 feet deep. The total cost is around $10.8 million for the entire project. Glendale's share is 4% of that, or $432,000. That is an amount not to exceed...
That's Phase One, though, right?
That's Phase One, and that's all we're here to talk to you about tonight.
Okay. Because in your fiscal report, it has Phase One and two at $36 million.
Right. All we're here to talk to you about tonight is Phase One, which is an amount not to exceed $432,000. If the wells confirm the resource, we'll come back to you with a project that is 50 to 200 megawatts, but that's not tonight. The project team estimates that the cost of the resource averaged over 30 years would be about $73 a megawatt hour to about $100 a megawatt hour. And if you're familiar with current renewable projects that we've approved and built, they're towards the top end of that range. So if these resources are proved, we've got a real opportunity for an extremely competitive project here.
What's a geothermal power facility?
There's hot water under the ground. That hot water comes up and turns the turbine.
I see. Okay.
And the good thing about geothermal that's different from wind and solar is that it's 24/7, it's baseload, it's not intermittent with wind, it's only when the wind blows with solar, so obviously only when the sun's up hitting the panels. So it's 24/7, power around the clock. And the other big benefit of this project is it's in California, and with some of the nuances of the recent mandates from the state, it's a big advantage to be in the state, because there's some issues related to whether or not it counts if it's outside of the state. So the material...
How much does it cost us per megawatt hour now?
Or...
It varies whether it's renewable or not.
I mean, our overall, I'd say, our fuel adjustment charge is about 50, it's an average of all of our resources, it's around $60 a megawatt hour. All of our renewable energy resources have been about $100-ish dollars per megawatt hour.
So this would be in between the normal power generation and the renewable? 75 to 100, you said?
The range is an estimate of how good this geothermal resource is. So if the water's really hot and we get a great resource, the cost could be as low as $73 a megawatt hour. The range of this particular geothermal project is estimated to be $73 a megawatt hour to $100 a megawatt hour. But we won't know exactly what that is or be able to nail that down until we drill the holes and find out what kind of resources down there.
Out of curiosity, where are we on our renewable requirements?
We, for 2012, we will be at about 24%. However, that 24% includes Hoover, and the new state mandate that was just approved in April does not allow us to count Hoover, which is about 5%. So in 2012, we'll be at about 19%. And the new mandate has a requirement of 20% averaged over 2011, 2012, and 2013, 25% by 2016, and then finally, 33% by 2020. So we're ahead of the game, and we're on track, and we're just trying to find reasonably-priced competitive resources at this point.
I just think it's important that people understand that there's, you know, the one more esoteric reason to do renewables, which is that it's good for the planet and it's sustainable, and it's not using dirty coal and all of that. But beyond that, the reason that we're doing renewables, even though they're more expensive, is because we have mandates from the state government that say, we have to do these renewables or else we have to pay penalties. So it's not a voluntary necessarily. I mean, it might be for some of us, but as a city, it's not voluntary to invest in renewables. And your strategy, I assume, is to try to find the renewables that are efficient and long-lasting, but also cost-effective, and that's what you're bringing us today.
Correct.
And it sounds like the chances are good that these wells will bear fruit, bear hot water?
Chances are good. There's another project only three miles away that's doing well. Our existing project in Ormat down in that area is 50 miles away. Looks good. The absolute maximum's this 432, but if they drill one hole and get absolutely nothing, you know, then we'll reevaluate and see where we go from there.
Any cards? I'd like...
I have no cards.
Would you like me to move A.C. one?
Second.
All right. Roll call.
Councilmembers Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes. Thank you. Next item.
The A.D. is City Attorney regarding proposed ordinance repealing and amending sections of Chapter 5.64 of the Glendale Municipal Code regarding massage to comply with state law. At E1 is ordinance for introduction. At E2 is a resolution modifying fees for massage permits and licenses.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to introduce the ordinance at eight, E1.
Well, I'd like to have a brief summary of exactly what this does.
Thank you. Mayor Friedman, members of the council, city staff. Good evening. Mike Grant, Senior Assistant City Attorney. Basically, I'll keep it very short, because some of this was already covered a few weeks ago with amendments to Title 30 in the zoning code. And basically, the legislature passed Senate Bill 731, which, among other things, created a state organization, a nonprofit organization, that basically regulates the practice of massage in the state. It essentially takes away from cities and counties the licensing aspect of it, and at the same time, it placed restrictions on cities from requiring their own permits on anyone who receives a certification from the state. What they did was they created a nonprofit organization, the California Massage Therapy Council, which is known as the CAMTC. And the CAMTC establishes minimum standards for education, training, experience. It also has taken over what our police department had previously done, criminal background checks. And anyone who receives a CAMCT certificate can practice anywhere in the state, in any city or any county, and at the same time, if they have that certification, cities and counties cannot require that person, that individual, to get a separate permit from the city to practice. So it allows them to freely go from city to city, state, within the state. What our ordinance does is makes changes so that it complies with the requirements of the state law, SB 731. Previously, the city issued permits to massage establishments and to individuals. We had a massage technician permit, and we also had a massage establishment permit. Under this proposed ordinance, the city will no longer issue those type of permits. We will be in compliance with state law. We allow the CAMTC to do the background check and check on the education and so forth of applicants, and they will issue the license, if you want to call it, actually, a certificate, to those individuals.
By the state?
By the state.
Not by a nonprofit organization? It's the state that will be issuing?
Well, it's actually, it's actually a nonprofit organization, the state created. It's one of these strange things. It's not a state agency. It is a nonprofit organization, and their sole purpose is to certify massage therapists. What we have essentially done is this: We've required that any individual who wants to practice massage here in Glendale has to have either one or the other certification, which is either become a massage practitioner or a massage therapist, CAMTC certified. Practitioner, the difference really is that a practitioner has anywhere from 250 to 499 hours' worth of experience and training and education. A massage therapist, under the state law, is someone who has 500 hours or more of combination of experience, training, and education. We are going to require that people who want to practice here have either those certifications. And for as far as massage establishments, massage businesses, we're going to require, as many other cities have now required, that they only employ a CAMTC-certified individual. So if it's, for example, if Massage Envy or another business here in Glendale, they will be required to have a, the individuals who work there will be required to have a CAMTC certification.
Okay. I think we got the gist of it. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I'll move eight, E2.
Actually, if I can, Mr. Weaver asked you to withdraw that. We're going to bring that back with the ordinance next week.
With the ordinance. Okay.
So the ordinance has been introduced, and so...
I'm sorry?
The ordinance was...
Okay. Great. Thank you.
I just want to point that there was one, on pages 14 and 21, we had two small amendments, which I can read or I can do for next week.
Well, we'll incorporate. They're very minor.
Yeah, very minor.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item, please. The item everyone's been waiting for.
At A.F., as Director of Community Services and Parks regarding discussion of the design of Glendale's 2012 Rose Float. At F1 is motion providing direction to staff.
Mr. Najarian?
Mayor Friedman, members of the city council, on August 23rd, 2011, the city council did approve the float design for the 2012 entry into the Rose Parade, and the city council authorized the city manager to enter into the design contract with Phoenix Decorating Company. During that meeting, there was some frustration expressed by the council over not having more time to be able to discuss or have the opportunity to review the design or have more input prior to the design coming before the city council. But because of the strict timeframes and needing to meet the requirements for review and approval by the Pasadena Rose Parade organization, we didn't have too many choices. Since then, the public and the council has continued to express an interest in talking further about the design or the theme and any potential for making any modifications whatsoever to the design. We do have Mr. Chris Loft House, the president of Phoenix Decorating Company, and there is probably no one more expert in knowing what the city's capacity is to make any changes or what would be required to attempt to submit any modifications to the Rose Float, Tournament of Roses organization. So at this time, we do have Mr. Loft House available and prepared to speak to the council. So if it's okay with the mayor and the council members, we'll go ahead and introduce Mr. Loft House.
Mayor Friedman, council members. I feel like I'm caught in the middle here a little bit as a businessman, as a small business owner in Pasadena. And we did go through a due process from the very beginning, and we've done this. I've had the privilege of doing, building the Glendale float for about 20 years, and we've been through a process, and I know that there's been a lot of issues with that process this year that have come up. The Glendale Rose Float Association, for many years, has given, been the body of people that have made the decision on the float. It goes through the Parks and Recs, who is, who did approve the float this year, and then we came up through those channels, and you, as a council, approved the building of the float. From that point, we have gone into production. There's a lot more that goes into these Rose Parade floats than most of the public understands. There's a lot of design and engineering and creativity, as you know, and many of you have been down to come down to do some of the finishing touches. There's a lot, many, many man-hours that have gone into the float. I have had my shop inundated with news crews and the likes in the light of this last issue with the elephant. My designers, the Rose Float Association, the Parks and Rec, and you as a council, never intended to put the spin on this float that people have put on it with the cruelty to animals. That was never the intent. I think it's an unfair spin that we've put on the float. The design was based on what's happened in this country, you know, the circus coming to town. It is a historical-based float. You can put, I think people have put a spin on it that has been unfair. I think that if you want to put a spin on it, if nothing, we are honoring the history of the circus and these animals that, you know, that have been abused, and that was never, never the intent of the design of this float, I think, all the way through the channels. And I think this spin on this float was done after the fact, and I think it's, the decisions were made to build this float and to, it was based on the creativity and the color and a lot of other things, but never the intent to promote the cruelty to animals. I, as a company, in the spirit of the Rose Parade and working with you folks for many years, want to do what I can to get away from that mystique, and I think we've done some things. I've brought some photographs of the float. Do you all have the packet of the float and the, with the rendering in it? Everybody can see that you've got a picture, and there's an original rendering to the float. Let me show you the pictures of what we've done to the float. Made it a lot more fun.
Madam Mayor, can I ask one question? Mr. Loft House?
Yes, sir.
You had to show all your renderings to the Tournament of Roses Association and receive their bio first.
Absolutely. That is all part of the process. It is subject to the approval of the Tournament of Roses. We are not on our own. It is another, there's another governing body of this parade, and they approved the designs. They never had the intent or never had the dream that anybody would take this and put that kind of spin on it.
Okay.
But currently, and you've got the pictures, and this is basically what we have done with the elephant. It is probably one of the happiest elephants that'll go through the parade. I think Mr. Ackerman had a very eloquent way of putting it, you know, this is going to be one of the best-taken-care-of elephants. It's a tour of Pasadena, and then it gets going to come back and see Glendale.
What's that around its ankle there?
Just a... I'm just asking. I mean, you know what I'm, I mean, when I say that, you know what I'm saying. I'm just... Exactly, and if you were to dress up, it's got the elephant blanket on it, and it's got a little collar, and it's got the little elephants on its ankles. It is simply decorated.
Okay, I do have a card, but are there questions?
What is the other picture?
The other picture is just close up of the face, and this is simply an art form. This is not a real elephant. This is an art form. This is, this is just like the, you know, if, I'm sure Walt Disney didn't make the movie Dumbo intending that he was going to get picketed by people saying he was cruel to animals, and I'm sure when they bring those movies out every 20 years, when that movie comes out again, you know, it's, to me, it's out of control, and it was never done to that intent.
Okay.
Mr. Loft House, the top of the decoration on the elephant isn't done yet, is it?
The elephant will be decorated in big moss. It will have a plume of pampas grass, Glendale pampas grass, I might add, that you see growing. It is a, it is an art form. It is a parade float. It was never intended for anything other than, it was to make, I think, as it comes down, it's going to make people smile. It's going to, you know, a lot of people who have been, you know, grown up with the calliope and the circus, it's going to bring a smile to people's faces.
Okay. Thank you. If there's no more questions right now...
Okay, well, I think, yeah, I wanted to ask, I think it's a little late in terms of design. We approved it, and we were given a limited amount of time, you know, the, all the issues this year with the float. Hopefully, we're going to come up with a better way to have Glendale design a float. So for me, it's not even the design at this point. However, you mentioned the theme, and I think that is something that I'm interested in. Like, the float itself, it's called Stepping Out in Style?
Yes, sir.
That's the name, so that's the banner and so forth.
That's the title on the front of the float.
Right, that's the title of the front of the float. I would be interested in changing that title. I don't know what title to give it. I have no idea, preconceived notions or anything, but I think we should do something in terms of the theme, in terms of the title, and come up with something that perhaps is less offensive to people that are concerned, and I think it's a very real concern with the way animals are treated in circuses, not only elephants, but other, but other animals. I happen to have grown up on the west coast of Florida, and that's always been the sort of winter grounds for many circus animals and performers. And if you think the national press picks up issues about cruelty, you could, you can't imagine throughout my lifetime how many times there were issues with those same animals who were then transport, who did circus-type of work throughout the country, then went to Florida for the winter. There were always issues. So I think it's a very real issue for a lot of people. But like I say, I would like to come up with some other name for the float that somehow is more indicative of what a lot of people feel about this particular float.
And certainly, we will certainly, and again, I am in...
I mean, that's certainly easy enough and cheap enough to change.
I just have one question on that.
There's, and again, there's more to, you know, there's, that is all subject to the Tournament of Roses. It all has to be submitted.
Right.
It will go through channels. It is something that we can do.
I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
What is the deadline for the Tournament of Roses program? Do I have the right name in the program? When do they go to the press?
We are under a lot of pressure now to get, to get the information that we have in so that that, those things can get finalized.
Okay. If there's no more questions, let me go to the public, and then we can come back and discuss this further. Thank you very much. Stick around, though.
Thank you.
Okay, I have one card. Sharon Weisman.
Mayor Friedman, council members and staff. I'm Sharon Weisman from far north Glendale, and I'm speaking as an individual. First, I want to again thank all the donors who made it possible for Glendale to have a float in this year's Rose Parade. I also want to thank, it'll be the 2012, next year's. I want to thank the Glendale Rose Float Association and the Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission for their volunteer efforts, too. There are never enough people to do everything that needs to be done, and often volunteering turns out to be a thankless task. And while I do appreciate all the work put in, I am surprised that none of the accomplished and talented people involved saw the obvious flaws in the design of this float. And despite the best intentions, there's no doubt that there are very negative connotations, very negative associations with elephants and circus elephants. I am still appalled by the design and hope you can craft a way to mitigate the damage to Glendale's reputation. Perhaps with a slight design change, perhaps unhitching the wagon, the name could be changed from Stepping Out in Style to Imagine Circus Elephants Freed From Their Burden, or some similar language. I think an explanation on the city's website that Glendale in no way condones animal abuse and is not promoting the use of elephants in circuses or other entertainment uses would also be a good idea. I think this situation can be used as a teaching opportunity, much like the city does with the swastika design on the lamp posts. There are many other issues facing the council, as letter, letter to the editor-writers and online commentators or commenters have noted, but I think this is important, especially in view of the collapse of Sarah, a 54-year-old elephant performer in the Ringling Brothers and Barlowman Bailey Circus, while she was being loaded into a railbox car in Anaheim following the August 7th finale at Honda Center. The video footage taken by Animal Defenders International of Sarah down on the sidewalk, unable to get herself up, is extremely painful. If you haven't Googled it, take a look and see what the city could be facing in terms of really horribly bad publicity involving circus elephants, real ones, this month in California. People for the Ethical Treatment of Animals and this other ADI, Animal Defenders International, have previously called for Sarah to be treated for her illnesses and retired, but the circus owners claim she is well-treated, and I think it's really foolish for Glendale to be put in the middle of this controversy through the poor choice of a float design. As to the defense that it's not a real elephant, none of those speaking against the design suggested it was a real elephant. It's the symbolism of celebrating something that is becoming less and less acceptable for many Americans that's being opposed, and I'll finish up. Councilmember Weaver is noting that an elephant has been used in prior Glendale's float as justification. To use one again is puzzling. There are many things that Glendale has done in the past that we do better now. Times and attitudes change as people get more information. I hope the process to select a float design can be changed in subsequent years so there is more input from a wider range of viewpoints. It's critical that whatever process is used to select the float, enough time is allowed for the city council to view the design prior to any construction. I hope the council will find a way to produce designs that are nonpartisan, don't involve controversial symbols such as circus elephants, and have a strong relationship to Glendale. Because again, I don't see how a circus reflects either the theme of the parade or anything specific about Glendale. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That was my only card.
May I say a couple of things?
Do you have any creative names for the...
Sure, I can come up with a name in a minute, soon as I think of one.
I believe you were talking about some disclaimer, someone carrying a sign ahead of the float. Wasn't that one of your ideas?
It's not about any... You can incorporate a soccer goal into the...
You're just not going to drop the soccer, are you?
I address a couple of things. One, the float is 35 feet long, cannot be separated. It's structurally bound together. The float cannot be longer than 35 feet. So that takes care of one point. Second, all the people that have found objections, too bad, they have not been members of the Glendale Rose Float Association in the past who has tried to increase their membership and gave their input at that time, even tried to get on the board. None of that happened. Third, my family came back from Disneyland yesterday, and what does my granddaughter walk in the house with? Dumbo. We'll figure. Two Dumbles, one for my grandson and one for my granddaughter. She, they love it.
Well, look, Mr. Weaver, kids and people in general love elephants.
No, no, I just think it's, I'm not trying to debate.
Very intelligent, no, I know.
Structurally, you cannot change the float at this time. We, if you're going to change the name, you have to do it soon because the Tournament of Roses program goes to press.
Yeah, no, I think it's too late to change the design, unfortunately, for me, but for other people, they could care less. I think it's too, but the name, I think we can come out, come up with another name. I don't know exactly who is going to be creative enough to...
Emancipation.
What?
Emancipation of elephants.
Emancipation, yeah, I don't know. But I mean, I'm for changing the name, rather than Stepping Out in Style coming up. I think the name the speaker mentioned was a little too long, but coming up with some name that'll change, change the float...
I think we have to come up with a name today if we're going to change the name.
They're talking, the Tournament of Roses program goes to press, and they have to have the right name.
Anyone have any suggestions for...
Well, we still don't know when they actually need a name. Here, an answer.
He said soon. He's under a lot of pressure already to turn in information. How much time do we have to change the name if we have to change the name?
Madam Mayor, council members, city staff, Ross Ferris, Community Services and Parks I spoke on Thursday to the marketing manager at the Tournament of Roses Association, and the program goes to print at the end of October, the third or fourth week of October. So I think between, I would say now and at least the first or second week of October, we would probably have some leeway as far as changing the name.
Okay, well, that's good news.
By the end of the month.
Right, so who do we sort of give the task of coming up with a few names, and then maybe we'll make the decision, or...
Part of a contest.
Parks and Rec a contest.
How about Parks and Rec doing that?
Do you have any ideas, Mr. Ferris?
One more issue or point. Any changes we make now are going to have to go before a Tournament of Roses Validation and Change Committee. I don't think the name would be that big of a deal as far as changing it at this point in time, but there is a process that has to be accomplished, and I'm not quite sure what it is as far as the length of time and the paperwork, but Mr. Loft House has a similar process with the design. It does involve going before the validation and Change Committee, stating the reason we want to change, what they've already approved, et cetera.
How long does that take?
I don't know.
Do we need attorneys for this, or...
I don't think, no, I don't think we need attorneys, but we need, we need the right forms, and we need a, a, a name to present to them, and we need a, some kind of a deadline. I would say, I will call and find out, but there is a process to go through.
Okay, well, like I said, I mean, I personally just think it's too late to get into the design change name, I think, or rather, the design change. I think the name change is much easier. Mr. Nigarian had a good idea in terms of maybe even having some people give us some ideas or come up with some kind of contest, whatever it is. I think that can be done quickly, and I'm sure the Rose Float Association will agree to any reasonable names that we come up with. We could even give them more than one choice. So that's where I'd like to take this.
I'm, I think, how does step, how does Stepping Out in Style offend anybody? I don't know. I'll go along with it, you know, but does Stepping Out in Style, does that offend? I'm being serious about this. Does Stepping Out in Style, yeah, it's...
Yeah, no, I guess I'm thinking of some symbolic name that would...
Do you want to make a statement in terms of freeing the elephants or something? Or freeing, you know, animals that are being abused?
Something along that lines.
Free Jumbo.
Something like, free Dumbo. Something along those lines. I just think it's minimal work for the committee and for the contractor and so forth. It's something that can be accomplished.
I, you know, I'll, I'll go along with it if, I think, I don't know if that's a, the name is an issue, and the city of Glendale wants to make a statement in terms of animal abuse. I think we've made a greater statement in terms of our ordinances when we passed no selling of cats or dogs, which is, you know, the actions speak louder than words, but I, but if, if the majority of the council feels that we can change the name and make a statement in terms of animal abuse...
Mr. Duran, do you have something to add?
Yes. Excuse me, Madam Mayor, council members, since we have to go before the Tournament of Roses Association, I'm, I'm pretty sure they're going to be very careful about considering a name that makes a political statement, as that's typically one of the things that they screen as names are submitted, and they review them and approve them. So if, if we get, if we make too much of a statement, it might be a futile attempt. I mean, there's no harm in submitting and requesting a name change, but, but I'm sure that's part of their criteria.
What happened to the First Amendment? They have to follow the...
Doesn't apply to the Rose Parade.
After the Tournament of Roses.
It's a private event, probably. That's who everyone should be picketing, all the civil liberties people. This is a canned, and they're feeding us papulum every Thursday on their political correctness. Can I get an amen from the ACLU? Amen.
Mr. Nigarian, do you have any feelings about the float name?
I don't have any strong feelings. We decide to keep it the same, fine, but if there's some brilliant, sensitive name that's out there that maybe has sensitivity, I would support that. It's not a large issue to me.
One more point that was just told to me. The, the name has to coincide or go along with the theme of the, of the parade.
What is the theme again?
Just imagine.
Right.
Just imagine?
Just imagine. So any, any name that would deviate from that or try to make a political statement won't, won't be approved.
Well, how just, if Just Imagine is the theme of the parade, how in the world does Stepping Out in Style dovetail with Just Imagine?
That is the next logical question, you know that. You knew it was coming.
I did. I did not choose that name, but that is the name, so...
Okay, thank you. Well, it sounds like there's no objection to hearing other alternatives. My feeling is I don't know whether the name's going to make a difference to people that object to the, you know, visual content of the float. My issue with the float from the start has been more that, just that I don't think it says anything about Glendale, and I think that's what our float should be. It should be our identity to the world. I don't see how this ties in with it, and I, it's definitely too late to change the design. That's not going to happen. I think the float will be beautiful visually. It's going to be stunning. You know, will it offend people in the country? We'll find out. But, you know, it sounds like there's a consensus on council that if somebody comes up with some great name change in the next few weeks that somehow softens the, you know, whatever negative feelings there might be about circus animals, or tying it in with Glendale more, or whatever it can be, we hear those, and we can decide then. Madam Mayor, might I suggest that...
Madam Mayor, might I suggest that, based on the feedback that we've received from all of you this evening, whether it's through our website or email groups that we have, we would open it up for people to suggest names to us, as well as staff, and within the next week to 10 days, come up with a list, a top list of, of the suggested names, and float those by the city council to see if we have any strong reaction to any of them, and be able to move forward within the next two weeks, because we have to bring closure to this item to give ample time to the Tournament of Roses process for approvals, et cetera, not knowing exactly what those deadlines are, as well as the builder of the float.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yeah, that'll work. That's a good idea.
Okay.
We'll do that.
Ready? Next item.
Return to oral communications, five-minute portion, where discussion is limited to items not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Okay, thank you. I have two cards. Barry Allen, followed by Charles Hooker.
Thank you, Mayor, council staff. I'm Barry Allen. Actually, I had a nice, quiet weekend, got a strange phone call on Sunday, but I really had an opportunity to read Vanguard, and I found it really, really, really interesting. The only thing that was missing were the photographs in all these articles from insiders and people that live and work and have businesses in Montrose. And I wondered about that, and I wondered what the city council was going to be doing about the issues in Montrose. We've seen a news press story or so about it. We've looked at the minutes of the MSPA, and we know that the city collects money for the BID and, and gives them back money to spend, and we know that the, the city issues permits, and the permits apparently aren't honored, at least by the MSPA harvest market people. And when I say they're not honored, it, there's something about covering over the sewers, the sewer outlets that take in the effluent from the ponies that are sitting there. In fact, here's a picture. There's no cover over that. If you can't see it, it's pretty bad. I can send it to you. And here's another one where they dump their food right into the ocean. And then, we look at, let's, let's forget the signs, but let's look at the water hookup. And, you know, that's, where's the Department of Health on the water hookup? And the toilet for all of those food vendors, the people that cook your food and serve it to you, and I don't think there's hot water in there. And then what was really, really bothering to me was the fact that this kiddie gym sits right out on the, right out on the, on the Perdugo and Honolulu, where anybody could actually drive in and hit it, hit some kids running across the way. So, and then, of course, we're not worried about the fire department, they sent some people to look at it this week, but there's maybe a 15-foot path where you can get a fire truck through, right? An engine or a, but they can't get through anyways because they have it blocked with, with cars and trucks, and they don't do those car and truck blockings when they're loading and setting up and not setting up. Anybody can just make that turn and go down Honolulu, and, you know, now, of course, besides the fact that the council reads Vanguard, even those who claim they don't, the city's on notice. So, when Honolulu becomes the Third Street promenade and people get killed by some errant driver, this council's on notice that you haven't demanded that your, your code enforcement people, that your police department, that your other public safety first responders aren't doing their job. Now, I think it's time that you take a real serious look at this, because it's going to come and bite each and every one of you where it hurts. And we're going to be talking about this, for those who are interested, at Foxy's on Thursday morning at 8:00 a.m. We're going to be looking at pictures, we're going to be reviewing letters that we have received from numerous people who are city employees who are very concerned about their jobs and very concerned about getting hooked up with this. I'm Barry Allen, and I thank you for your time, and I really would think that you take specific heed on this issue. We'll see you on Thursday morning at 8:00. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Hooker is my last card.
My name is Charles Hooker. I live on the Glendale-Montrose border, and Mr. Allen just ran off about the Montrose market. Well, what I want to know is, are we going to change this at all, or are the vendors, some of the vendors going to be chased out and left out of the, um, good money-making thing that we have in Montrose-Glendale? I know that some of the, they, the vendors and stuff have all kind of got the notice sometime this week that there was going to be some kind of changes, and they wanted to do away with the flea market-type atmosphere that they have here, and just make it into nothing that'll dry up in a couple of days, I mean, a couple of weeks. And like Mr. Allen, I have never seen anything going on like he claims and, or anything that he has been, thinks that's going on. And then, the second thing I want to make sure and say is, I want to say, thank you, Steve Zern, for the great work that you guys did up on our area, up in the 912, 91208 zip code on our hillside. It looks great, and I wish that everybody that has property up there could say, or send a notice in to Mr. Zern and say, "Thank you. We sure appreciate you." And another question I would like to say is, oral communications has been relocated to the end of the meeting. It used to, and it states in our bulletin that it's in about the mid-part, and why does the oral communications have to be at the last, where it used to be in about the middle part? I guess that's because they figure everybody's gone to sleep, and they're not going to have anybody listen to anybody. And the next thing I'd like to say is, I'd like to say, thank you to Mr. Draymond for the great work that he did when he was on the city council, and we really miss Mr. Draymond and that spot that he had. He was always a gentleman, he was quiet, and he was a really a hard worker, and he did a lot of good for us in Montrose-Glendale. It's a shame that he lost his seat, because we sure don't need somebody that jumps up and down like a jackrabbit every time and has to make issues out of anything and everything, just to have somebody notice him. And I guess I'd like to say thanks to all the rest of the city council people for being gentlemen, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate Mr. Zern, too. He...
Has a jackrabbit, no. No, no comment. I will not be jumping up and down.
May I move, we adjourn?
Do we have new business?
Yeah.
Oh, we do? That's right.
I move that the city attorney's office is authorized to initiate a legal action, and the filing of said action is hereby ratified. The action, the defendants, and all other particulars shall, once formally commenced, be disclosed to any person upon inquiry unless to do so would jeopardize the agency's ability to effectuate service of process on one or more unserved parties, reference to Government Code, Section 54957.1, subsection A2. Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Manoukian?
Yes.
Jarian?
Yes.
Montero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes.
May I move, we adjourn?
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you.